It's my lucky jacket.
Sorry?
Steve and I talked about this after Tuesday. You know, I wore my lucky jacket tonight, you know, thinking that, you know, I'm playing Powerball and lottery. Leading up to next Thursday, so in case I win a few million, I can, you know, we can make a...
You can donate it?
A donation to the district.
Okay, so welcome everyone, thank you for coming to our work. Okay, thank you all in the audience for being here. We're going to start back up on page thirty-two, which is our special education summary. Does anybody have any comments or questions regarding that page?
So as was with the rest of the book, the page thirty-five gives you a lot of the explanations around large increases or decreases. And then obviously the following page, other than the cover page for that section of the budget, has it itemized and broken out by line item.
Okay, then moving on to page thirty-three. Anyone have any questions? Okay, I have a question on account eight-three-one-two-five.
Yes.
Just ballpark, how many students are we servicing in the extended year?
I would, ballpark, probably close to two-hundred.
Okay.
But I could get you that exact number.
Okay, yeah. Anyone else have any questions on that? James?
So eight-three-three-one-nine, purchase services. I mean, it's fluctuating a lot. What's the situation there? It goes from like forty-four thousand to almost four-hundred to fifty to two-thirty-two? What's making it fluctuate so much?
I believe the rationale behind the increases, in the previous years, the nexus tuitions offset the actual expenditures in this account, so they would budget very, on the lower side, knowing that those funds were coming in to offset it. Over the past couple of years, we've made different decisions with nexus tuition, so we felt it was appropriate at this time to bill, or to build into the budget an actual number that we can support. This number also is offset by any Medicaid receipts that we get at the district, so this is a net number.
Is there a time, just out of curiosity, with the Medicare, is there a lag?
I'm sorry, Medicaid?
Medicaid, oh, I get confused. Medicaid, with the Medicaid, is there a lag time for those payments to come in?
There is a billing process, and we do get payments in, I believe they're coming in quarterly now, they were coming in monthly, but yes, there is a lag. But at the end of the fiscal year, we wait for those last couple of receipts, and they get applied to the year that they were earned.
Okay, okay, thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Dernowski?
We had thirty-six yet, or I don't want to jump ahead.
Go for it.
Eighty-three-three-seventy, out-of-town tuitions. You know, five-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-dollar increase, how many students does that reflect?
So, yeah, that was, that line is the item that, if you remember, the amended summary page we provided Tuesday evening, because I had said there was a slide that I had new information on, and there was going to be some adjustments made to it. So that number of five-forty-four should actually reflect two-forty-four. That was the adjustment that you got Monday, or Tuesday evening, on that Mrs. Mellon had provided for, and that's what brought us from that seven-point-six-four down to the seven-point-three-one. But to answer your question, I believe we're at sixty-five students?
We are.
Yeah. As a comparison's sake, I was looking up some data today. Similar-sized town in terms of enrollment and number of high-need students, West Haven has one-hundred-and-ten students outplaced right now. We have sixty-five. A lot of that, if you think back to the special ed presentation, is that continuum of services that we've built over time, that's provided us some cost avoidance.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions? Thirty-six, thirty-seven? Any questions with the explanations, account explanations? Okay, moving right along to major projects and equipment.
There are none.
Yeah. Everything is twenty-four, twenty-five. Okay. So, moving right along. Any questions on that at all, for future reference?
It's hard to cut something that has a zero.
Yeah, well, I just thought if you had, I just thought if you had any questions on...
No questions.
No questions, okay. So the non-lapsing accounts.
Yes, okay. So, Mrs. Mellon has a document for you this evening, which is not specifically part of this proposed operating budget, but this is part of a conversation I know the board wanted to have during these budget workshops around prior-year projects that have been previously approved but not yet started. Sorry, Mr. Oshana? She...
I can email it to you.
She can email that to you, yes, yeah. And so I think our thought process was to start with the document that you all just received, because it really is prior-year funding that was previously approved. And if we think back to last year, there were also no major projects in equipment, special projects, as part of the fiscal year twenty-three budget that I proposed. That was all encumbered through non-lapsing unassigned fund balance, and so that took a big chunk out of it, but that's some of what you see here this evening that we welcome for the conversation about. So, any questions you have relative to any of these projects, and thoughts or concerns, I am all ears. Mrs. Mellon is emailing you now.
Trying.
Okay, why she emails that to Mr. Oshana, Mr. Romano, and I, we welcome any questions you have about any of these projects.
Yes.
So it's not so much that I have questions about the projects. Again, I know that we, these were tentatively approved, and again, in the spirit of what we've been doing with the non-lapsing accounts as far as getting capital projects done at the schools. I think, you know, part of the issue I run into is, again, these are big-ticket items, you know, again, the turf stadium lights, while I agree, I think it'd be great to do those, you know, that's a hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars realistically, you know, again, we have essentially a one-time looming fee of getting the self-insurance fund flush again. I really think we have to be looking at these funds, you know, not for our operating budget, but essentially, you know, how do we start peeling off the bigger-ticket items? That again, is just, it's more of like one-time, make the funds flush type thing. So, you know, again, while I am happy with the projects that we've been able to get done over the past, certainly, the three years that we started doing the non-lapsing account, you know, I think unfortunately, we maybe haven't put a hard stop on some of these things. I don't know how anybody else feels.
You know, if I'm hearing you, what I think you're saying is if we were able to use some of the non-lapsing account funds to offset the size of the increase to the health insurance.
Correct.
But I would, I would, I'm not sure that I agree that that's not part of the operating budget, because the health insurance next year isn't going to go down presumably, so the base is still there, and we're using funding that's not part of the base, we're using this, similar to ARPESR that we did a couple of years back, we're using funding that will go away, and then so next year's budget increase would be even larger than seven-point-six-four, because we're now trying to make up for those funds that weren't part of the base, they were taken from another source. So while we could use it to reduce the budget this year, we know to do business, it's still seven-point-six-four percent wherever we get that from. Next year, if it goes up even five percent, we're now down twenty-five percent from the base that we started with.
Exactly.
Because we funded it from non-lapsing funds that no longer exist when we go to the town and ask for funds relative to health insurance.
My only counter to that, though, is in, what was it, the last two budget cycles, we were able to reduce our expenditure into self-insurance, and essentially take that money and move it into other accounts. So it's more, again, I think we've already had a taste of that, if you will. And again, this is unfortunately what it looks like now that we have to pay Peter back after paying Paul.
Yeah.
Again, I completely understand, and I think it's more, I'd rather see money go toward, again, creating a healthy self-insurance fund, rather than putting it into salaries, for example. Like, to me, I would quantify doing salaries and that type of thing as more of the, I know it's both operating expense, but I understand where I'm coming from.
Yep.
Well, and I think we still also, I mean, I still have questions as far as the overall analysis as to where health insurance is really going to be in another year. I'm not convinced that it's truly, this is the new norm, right? And several businesses are having the same conversations, and a lot of people are looking at it like this is coming out of COVID, elective surgeries are up, so to that point, I also think in order to realize, I said this the last meeting, right, in order to realize those savings, if we increase to that number now, we're never going to see those savings in the future, right? We'll use the money to fund something else, I got it, but we'll still be here.
Yeah, okay.
My position is, non-lapsing should not be used for budget items, you know, operational budget, it should be one-time expenditures, like we've been doing in the past. I'm not sure, you know, the, you know, some of the things that we had thought about, I think part of it, Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, we were going to allocate some monies for that third, or for that twenty-seventh pay period?
Yes.
Yes, those are, those are in our budget book.
Right.
And those, that was previously approved at the end of our fiscal year, so that's on the fiscal twenty-two approved project list. This list that I passed out this evening are projects that were previously approved in past budget processes, but no progress has been made on those projects. So anything else that we've accomplished or we're in process of, like the design of the entryways and the indoor air quality, those are not shown here because we're using those funds and we're working on those projects.
We've already started and issued the POs and all that, so, you know, the horse is out of the barn, so to speak, on those projects, but these are the ones that we still have time to.
The camera software license for the middle schools, that should, those are annual charges, correct?
I'll let Mr. Romano speak to that, but...
Sure, but those are a three-year charge, not a one-year charge. It was considerably more expensive to do it on the annual basis.
The challenge with those licenses is they're proprietary, so if they go with the program and the software that we have, so if we don't have the license, then the cameras don't work.
Right. Shouldn't those be a regular operational expense, rather than a one-time?
Yeah, this was all going back to last year, trying to pull everything out and doing that again this year.
Okay.
That was a one-time every-three-year expense, which is why we went that route with this item, you know, last year. I mean, the lights, I talked with Mr. Romano about, you know, and Mr. Romano, I don't know if you want to elaborate a little bit, I think having an overview for the board about why we proposed it.
Sure.
And where we're at with it.
Sure. So, the lighting for the turf, that's come up quite a few times, and just to give you a little bit of history or background, what happens is, at the turf field, when a bulb goes out, it's not an easy just-go-up-there-and-change-a-bulb. You need a special lift to get to as high as those poles are. We can't rent that lift, that's something that an outside vendor comes in and does for us. Back when Mr. Ferry was the AD, we had tried a different approach, thinking that if we just relamped all of the lights at once, we'd get three to five years out of them, based on what the wattage of the bulb and how long they told its useful life was. So, that didn't work. In year two, we had two lights go out, and the cost of the lights is insignificant, it's the cost of the lift and the labor to install them. When a bulb goes bad, they're glad to give you a new bulb, but they're not paying for the lift, and they're not paying for the rental. I took the opportunity just now to pull up the cost that we've paid the electrical contractor that's come and done it for us, and since 2018, we've paid them a little over twenty-thousand dollars to replace bulbs. The LED bulbs have a much longer useful life, and are warranted and guaranteed for that. There is some benefit that the LED lights obviously use less energy, and they have the ability to make sure that there's no light pollution, they are directed right to the area of the field, so it helps any of the glare that any of the residents would see along the street. I guess that's it, I don't know if there's anything else you have questions?
We had talked about just costing out the energy at that time.
Yeah. At that time, when we did cost out the energy savings, the payback period was close to seven years. I don't have that, I was looking for that information, I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, is something we did with Ms. Donello. I could try and reinvent that wheel, but we know the cost of electricity has gone up, so again, there's savings in the energy consumption. That field gets a tremendous amount of use, I don't, I'm sure you're all aware of it, between, if the athletics are not using it, the band is using it, if the band is not using it, the rec leagues are using it. It's, except for the cold winter months, it's used all year round.
What's the warranty period on the LED lights?
I'd have to look that up, I don't have it in front of me.
And does that, just the same way, warranties on the cars, sort of, you know, not including labor? So, if a bulb does go out, does that, is there like some sort of drop-off period, almost like a warranty, where maybe they don't cover the whole thing, but they cover a percentage?
No, I think it depends on which vendor would be selected, obviously, this would be something to have to go out to bid. There's vendors like Musco that will guarantee that, so they actually own it for that time, but that would be something we would have to either put into the RFP, or have to be negotiated with the contractor.
So, you know, given that, that's just informational for you guys, for context, in terms of what we've discussed. The replacement of the classroom window blinds, I would recommend that we consider keeping that on the list. That is twofold. In many instances, it's classrooms on the ground floor of buildings where, as part of our safety protocols, there are instances where we draw the shades, and then in some other instances, at some of our older schools, they're just to the point that they're not operable anymore, and the light that's coming in is wonderful, except when you're trying to use smart boards. As you all know, when we use this projector, if the room is really bright, and you can't darken it at all, especially if the sun is rising on that side of the building, given that time of day, the kids can't even see, you know, the boards. So it's a matter of whether it's hindering technology or it's enhancing safety, we know safety and learning are two priorities, so I would recommend we keep that, because it kind of checks both of those boxes. The world language computer refresh, probably some of you may at some point in time, through curriculum and instruction, have been to the world language lab at the high school. It was one of the first in the state, it's something that's used extensively. It produces an enormous benefit for our students, if you see the amount of students that are going on, and I know we did a demonstration for the board a couple of years back with the ACTL standards and the oral proficiency that they're achieving, and the sale of bi-literacy, which we use for our students as part of their transcripts, and, you know, as part of the enhancement to their college applications. That's a tool that's used extensively, those machines do, you know, it's similar to all of your machines, there gets to be a point that you can't run updates on the machines that are there anymore relative to the software that you're using. So we did talk with the network manager about that. The challenge with this as well is the software is not something that, because of our one-to-one device, it's not something that we can just say, put it on every single device, that is taking world language, because some of it has to do with the software against the operating systems of our Chromebooks, you know, so it's a PC-based software. So, under advisement of the network manager, it was that we keep these devices slated for, because of the upgrades and the updates that need to be done. Tyler did talk with Mrs. Ricchio, and she felt that if they weren't upgraded, then they couldn't update the software appropriately. Flooring replacement and asbestos, and the replacement of exterior doors. I think knowing that there's a school construction project on the horizon relative to a Karen Smith Academy, that is something that if the board felt we would pull off this list, I don't see that being a problem. This was all more for enhancement before that school became part of the conversation. But we have done a test fit for a new Karen Smith Academy on the Dernowski site, it does fit, and so our goal would be, and those of you who have been to Karen Smith Academy know, it's a building that's been repurposed several times, so it's not necessarily designed for the program, but they're making it work. But I think ultimately, what we would want to provide for those students is a comparable or better experience than we offer to all of our students, not a building that's been repurposed and isn't meeting their needs. So with that said, I would recommend, if the board wanted to consider that, these are items that we could entertain removing. And then the last one is the auditorium seating, and along those same lines, it's not a big number, it's ninety-six-hundred dollars, but again, with, you know, where we are with the budget, and where we are with the future of those seats, we have refurbished a lot of them, this has been a reoccurring project that we worked on over time, but I think where we are right now, that's an item as well, that I think, given the pending in school construction projects, we could probably pull off. I don't think we would want to spend ten-thousand dollars only to have those seats ripped out in a year or two. And then the other two projects are informational, I know they were discussed at the Board of, not the Board of Finance, the Finance Committee meeting, the visitor verification system. There was going to be an action item last week, it was accidentally omitted from the agenda, so we're going to add it to the next agenda, and it was for hardening the entryway at Southington High School. And the proposal at the time was to use these funds instead, because thinking back to the conversation we all had, was the visitor verification system did have some benefits, but I think everybody questioned, do the benefits outweigh the, what's the return on investment if the visitors are already in the building when they're being verified? Right? And we'd said, if we hardened the entryways and you could verify who visitors were prior to allowing access, that would make a lot more sense for the tool at that point in time. So given that, we talked about, well, we still have that situation at Southington High School, that visitors are in the building prior to the appropriate verifications occurring. And yes, there's a security guard there, but it is not an armed security guard, and it's someone who stops visitors, questions their reason for being in the building, and, you know, they proceed accordingly. This would essentially stop the amount of traffic coming into the building, and would only allow authorized visitors, because security could verify through a staff, member, administration, what have you, that the person who says they were there for a meeting actually has a meeting scheduled, and that we can allow them entry. We have had instances in the past, in the boards where people have gained access to the building, saying they had official business to do there, and they didn't. And again, you only know that once they're in the building, and so you have to handle that delicately, and, you know, in terms of doing it in a dignified way to whoever that person may be, but also ensuring the safety of your students at the same time. So, the hardening of the entryways is a minimal cost at this point, and it's not considered a long-term solution for a redesigned entryway, but in our collaborations with the interagency safety and security committee, they felt it definitely would be an appropriate step at this time, and would buy us some time until we can get to that point. So, no action needed on that, I'm just giving context. And then the press box roof, you all know, we just adopted the capital plan last week, which included replacement of the bleachers and press box, so given that that's slated for future work, to use those funds when it's already slated within capital doesn't make a lot of sense. So, Mr. Oshana?
Those projects, they were all approved, right?
Yes.
Do we have anticipated starting some?
Mr. Romano?
No, not at the current time.
Nothing's impending at this point.
Nothing pending at this time.
So in the next three months or so, nothing's going to be started?
Correct. So you technically don't have to do anything with them this evening, and I think it was good context for everybody about what's there that's not been started yet, because I think that's the question that a lot of people in the community have had. I've heard numbers thrown around about the amount of non-lapsing or unassigned fund balance that we have, so our goal was just to put this out there, like, other than what you're about to see, which is part of my superintendent's proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-four, this is all that's left of projects to be done, and funds that are available because of that. So with that said, I would entertain a conversation now around the major projects in equipment and special projects relative to fiscal year twenty-four. So these are the items that the board has not reviewed yet or discussed, that were part of requests coming from the administration as part of the budget process dating back to the fall. So if you were to look at page, twofold, Mrs. Mellon, if you don't mind, can you give them just a quick overview of what they're looking at on page forty-nine?
Sure, on page forty-nine, we were trying to show the balances, unallocated balances of the fiscal non-lapsing funds. So you have a fiscal twenty, unallocated balance of two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand, fiscal twenty-one, there's seven-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand, fiscal twenty-two, two-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand. So the three of those combined is a million-two-forty-nine-two-forty, and those are essentially the unallocated balances. At this time, this sheet that we just reviewed are still included, have been reduced out of that one million-two, so if you were to make decisions to remove one of these projects, that one-million-two-forty-nine-two-forty would increase. Then Ms. Hill prepared a summary by category of the new fiscal twenty-four requests that we received from the administrators and the principals and the coordinators, and she broke them out into what we would typically have considered a major projects in equipment, regular ed equipment, special ed equipment, and special projects. The other projects, you'll see on the next page as well. So if we were to fund everything that is being presented at the current time using non-lapsing, we would have an unallocated balance of three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-two-seventy-one. And as Mr. Medansi stated, these are a first read for all of you, these are brand-new requests that you haven't seen before. So on page fifty, we listed all the projects, if it was something that we discussed last week at the Finance Committee, we did put a little tick mark there to show that we had had that conversation, and those are anything that has an A next to them, anything that has a B next to them, we tried to prepare a breakout of if it was the technology projects, flooring projects, furniture, things you would have typically seen in the major projects in equipment narratives. So, we can let you take a look at the descriptions, and welcome any comments or questions that you may have on the list.
So what's on page fifty is essentially the five-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-dollar major projects in equipment, that tire nugget there, and that's what's proposed for this budget.
Yes, and we broke it out into, essentially, you want to use up the old money first.
Right.
So, starting at the top, Ms. Hill prepared the first two projects to zero out the non-lapsing account, so the continued work on the elementary project, if you added those together, it's fifty-thousand dollars, and the subtotals are on the page before as well.
Okay, and just, again, I'm just trying to clarify in my own head, and what's already approved has already been reduced out of this one-point-two-four-nine?
Correct, because they were already approved projects in previous budget meetings.
So where you look at the technology infrastructure renovations, if you look at page fifty-one?
Yep.
That's a breakout of what that number consists of. that's a breakout of what that number consists of.
I follow you. Okay, great. Do those include licensing costs in those numbers? Do they do? Okay.
Move to the mic. Please.
He does have a carrying voice, though.
Yeah.
Since we're planning on keeping the technology for as long as we can, we're future-proofing it for the purchasing. We're also future-proofing the licensing, so these licenses would be, you know, five-year terms staggered throughout. So we're trying to kind of maximize the purchases for the life or almost the full life of each piece of technology.
And I think, as this board would know, we did a lot of work with capital, you know, relative to the network and in the infrastructure with the non-lapsing account funds in the past, as well as a lot of the grant funds that we received, you know, throughout the pandemic. So we were at a point of catch-up, considerable catch-up. We had several meetings with AdNet and they talked about parts that were critical at that time. And I think what what Mr. Savage is doing now is trying to set us on a road that we never fall back there, because we can't count on getting that money ever again. Well, we may not see non-lapsing account fund balances ever again as large as they were. They were only that size because of, we didn't, weren't paying for substitutes. There was reduced costs to buses, things like that during COVID, and so that's what, you know, left that number to be larger. But as you saw last fiscal year, the the remaining balance on a hundred-and-four-million-dollar budget was two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars, which covered the twenty-seventh paycheck this year. There wasn't a lot of projects that came out of that. So I think his use of this funds, I applaud, because he's looking ahead and trying to prevent us from getting to a point five years from now where you're seeing an enormous request relying on it within the operating budget, because we haven't updated these critical structures within the network.
And also with the switch replacement and the host replacement, we're also trying to reduce where we can. You know, just because we had three, the landscape of when we created this, when it was three, we don't necessarily need them, so we're going down to two. So we're trying to be conscious of that as well. Also, technology is, you know, cheaper, not overall, but as far as the, how well the technology is, is on a lesser scale as technology grows. So we're able to do the same with less, if that makes sense, the same with less physical
Yep.
devices.
The elementary project was broken out over two, you can see two items there. And because we know that there are pre-refendum and and pre-construction-related costs relative to a project and work that has to be done by certain groups leading up to the application submission. The lift gate, you know, we had a hold on as of the last meeting, so, you know, if it doesn't have an A or a B, those are items that the administration requested that we left in in the budget. So those would be items that would be up for your discussion, if you had questions.
Just because I'm not familiar with it, can we, can we talk about the removal of the darkroom?
Yes.
Which is a thirty-three-thousand-five-hundred-dollar hit to the non-lapsing
Sure.
account.
So I can speak to it briefly, and then I'll let my my master speak to the the nuances of it. But that's a, it's a class we no longer offer, where we're using a darkroom to develop film. And the room where it's currently located is one of only three art rooms in that wing that is divided down the middle by half of a dark, a darkroom, and then half of a where they were trying to do some graphic design on computers and whatnot, which has limited the space that's now in there, because it's kind of like a long, narrow room. It's, you know, and the darkroom's in the front half of it, where you walk in, it's right to your left. So the thought was to take that wall down and make that into a large room for full use, because we also have to limit the number of students that we can allow taking some of those courses, because the size of the room and the amount of computers that we have in there. With that said, of course, I went there, laid eyes on it and thought, oh, this isn't a big project at all, so yeah, we can do this. And then Mr. Romano went and laid eyes on it as a contractor would, and then he'll set me straight, so go ahead.
Sure. I, if you haven't seen the room, I would encourage you to to view it. Several principals have asked us to make that into a single room. The 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 biggest problem that you have there is that the glass on the outside goes up quite high. So the ceiling is there, is a slope ceiling. When we take down the wall that is separating the room, it's basically like a a long corridor, the way it's set up right now, very narrow. So you really need to get rid of that wall in order to make it a full classroom. And when you take down that wall, now your ceilings are not going to line up, so you're going to have to go ahead and actually create a whole new ceiling. It's going to impact the floor tile that was done at different times, so they're not going to match up. And a lot of it, we are doing it in as much of a piecemeal fashion as you could, but still having it look respectable. But the the, it is a considerable amount of work.
And there is plumbing in that darkroom, as you imagine, obviously, for, so I believe there was a sink and piping on that one wall where we had to...
There is sink and piping. There's a, there's a lot of of darkroom equipment that is still in there. We did already have our our asbestos consultant come out and confirm that there's nothing in there that's going to be a problem for remediation, so we don't have a surprise down the road.
So, quick question. So there's still darkroom equipment in that room?
Yes.
Is there any potential value in it if we're not offering the course to be able to sell that equipment?
Only to somebody over seventy-five. I'm just joking.
Any interest, Mr. O'Shaughnessy or Mrs. Carverdy?
I'll get you later.
I know you will. That's why I said it.
But beyond that, I mean, I I know you can see, a lot of it, when you see things like a disc sander for sixty-three-hundred dollars, that's an industrial-grade disc sander that's heavily used by an entire tech ed department. You know, Mr. O'Shaughnessy, he's been down in that area for the Tech Advisory Committee. It's, these are items that are not huge items that we would have put in the operating budget in any other year. We just simply couldn't do it, because we're trying to get that number down, so that's how they found their way onto this list.
Mr. Darren Askey?
Yeah, I think, you know, basically, overall, I think it's a great idea. What I would like to see, though, is to retain some of the non-lapsing funds, almost like a
Cushion?
A cushion against some major issue like we've had in the past, when a boiler lets go. You know, now we got to scrape up a couple hundred thousand dollars for replacements, so.
And when you're looking at the balance on page fifty, Dave, that comes down to sixty-three-thousand, four-oh-eight, you have to go forward two more pages to page fifty-three to see the balance in the fiscal twenty-two non-lapsing account. So there is another two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand there. So the total, if if all these projects were funded, we'd have a cushion unallocated of three-hundred-and-twenty thousand in all of them.
I see that, right. I'm making a statement that I think, you know, going forward, you know, if
The goal should be to spend it all, because you never know what...
I wouldn't want to go any any deeper than that, only for the purpose of obtaining something in the event of a, something that's catastrophic.
Madam Chair, Mr. O'Shaughnessy has something?
It's the same question I asked for the last one. Do we have expected, anticipated start dates on these projects? Because again, I think based on where we are today, where we'll be in another couple of months, that's going to be, that's going to be important.
These, we do not, because they're they're the part of this fiscal year budget presentation, so they hadn't even been, yeah, so there's no start timeline on these.
Right, so the point is, they, these won't start until next year?
Yes, the one thing I would caution that we've run up against in years past is some of these projects, Mr. Romano has to line up some of the vendors, and we may have to do some bidding and whatnot. And so if we're waiting until May, then we end up, that window of opportunity is gone, because you're not going to get bids and contractors signing on for work within the month, when school gets out.
But I think, so, so if, so we'll approve the budget, whatever gets in it is in it, and so it's got to go through some additional processes. At that point, are you going to be bidding before the final budget number is assigned?
I mean, we we can go out for RFPs and we can, you know, unofficially give them letters of intent. But that's, that's typically what we do. Any work that we could not get done this coming summer of twenty-three would actually still possibly be bid this summer for twenty-four, so we can get everything ordered and and ready here. There still is a lot of problems with getting materials to to the job sites, so we have to factor that.
And, sorry to cut you off, if we were to do any RFPs prior to the fiscal year-end, the language that's worked into that results, you know, we have caveats that if the funding is not available, it would not be awarded. And then the only other comment I have is on on page fifty, the very last project, which was related, we've talked about this before, the reduction to the Title I funding in fiscal year twenty-three. So if anything, that is one item that I would love to have approved, because we do have the, an actual shortfall in the current year that we're dealing with. And we would not have to draw it down if the special ed access cost funding comes in ahead of where we're projecting. So the, those funds would remain until the last closeout of our fiscal year, but just knowing that we would have it there to offset the budgeted shortfall related to the Title I.
Yeah, just to kind of, just to explain Title I, right, like, so that's that improving basic programs, and then it looks like we cut, we're we're losing like forty percent of what we've been funded in the past for that, right, from grants? Can you just explain so everybody understands exactly what the Title I funding provides?
Sure. So the Title I funding is a federal grant. It's called, it's called an entitlement grant, and it's recalculated using a certain formula that essentially, the last time they ran it, we, the the new calculation landed us at four-point-nine-seven percent. In previous years, it was five percent, so that three one-hundredths of a point difference netted that reduction of two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars. In addition to that, in terms of, to your question, so what does that buy us? A lot of those Title I funds, and they, this is very clear, Title I funds must be used for, A, in a Title I identified school, which we have a few of those in town, five, I believe. And number two, it cannot be used to supplant a budget. It would, the application would be denied. It has to be used to supplement. And so, back when we were building the SRBI model, if you remember back to like two thousand and fifteen, which was part of the special education law revisions in terms of providing early intervention prior to identifying students, we used the Title I funds to add the math specialists or literacy specialists, or in some cases, some support staff, school psychologists, staffing to the Title I schools specifically. So that, those, those funds are tied to salaries of staff that were supplemental, not supplanted. They were added as a result of those funds, and that's where we run into the shortfall, to your point, because we didn't, we weren't notified of that reduction until October of this year, and as you all know, we adopted our budget in May of last year. So it was one of those things, to Mrs. Miller's point, that's why we have the shortfall right now. It wasn't an over expenditure of any sort, it was a reduction that was passed on to us after the fact.
And and would it be safe to assume that some of that is used to like, to to sort of assist, we know, coming out of, out of COVID, right? With shutdowns and stuff, obviously, we've seen an increase in some of the, some of the special, I guess, training or instruction that some of the students need, right? This would, this would help
Absolutely.
set that, right?
You're spot on, yep. And and, yeah, so the interventions, you know, part of the interventions are not only to, as part of the identification process, if they're working well, it prevents an identification. And so to your point, that are make it, that just need remediation and support, right, as their form of early intervention. Then, and then gaps close and we exit them from those interventions. But then there are other instances where we apply the interventions with fidelity and the child's not making progress, which may lead to an identification of a learning disability. So you don't really know, but those staff members are the crucial go-between, if you will, in terms of whether there's a a true disability that we're dealing with here, or is it just remediation and support that's needed because of, you know, those variables like COVID, attendance, illness, and other items.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Just a point, point of clarification. So, again, I I think this is exactly the importance of having a savings account, and that's a, this is what I view these non-lapsing accounts for. But but to be clear, you know, I guess one could argue that this is for operating expense, right? So by helping to fund that is essentially salaries and
Yes.
personnel. So I want to, I want to make that clear on that, so it's not that, you know, again, I I get the argument of not using it for self-insurance and things like that, but, you know, the unfortunate reality is, you know, we have to base spending on on what we're faced with. The other thing I'd like to mention too, and, you know, I, again, I...
But could I, could I add to that a little bit?
Yeah, go ahead.
So one of the things that we did within the fiscal year twenty-four budget is we did increase that because of that reduction, so that that is passed on to the operating budget, that reduction. So this would be a one-time expenditure of that two-fifty-seven for this current fiscal year, because of the shortfall that occurred mid-year. We built that reduction into this next year's operating budget, so that we wouldn't need to use two-fifty-six from the non-lapsing account fund every year.
Thank you for that clarification, too. And again, just the same way, when I mentioned self-insurance, you know, again, like, I'm not looking to be able to add, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty or five-hundred thousand dollars to a self-insurance fund every year, this is more, you know, we're faced with this sort of pitfall here. The other thing, looking at some of these things, like the basketball shot clocks, I mean, the the one-and-a-half horsepower belt and disc sander, things like that, have, have we tried to outreach to some of our business counterparts or, you know, people in town? Because these are the types of things where, you know, again, like, I, I think I've mentioned it a couple of times, is trying to figure out a way, and, you know, even with our high school principals, being able to outreach to the community and see if things like this, I mean, I I know the the Calvinices have donated lacrosse clocks and things to Panthorn Park, and, you know, again, there's, we have such awesome community members. Are these the types of things where we can, again, create these public-private partnerships and...
It's, it's certainly not out of the realm. I think an counterargument I've gotten for that sometimes is when we're going out into the community soliciting funds for equipment and supplies, people say, I'm a taxpayer, I pay my taxes, you know, you should be using that to fund your education needs. And so I've, I've seen, I mean, even something as simple as when we sent a letter home around, the notebooks and the highlighters and stuff that the teacher recommends the kids get, the parents are saying, well, where, where's my tax money going to? I provide, you know, you get tax money for supplies and materials, why are we purchasing these things? So there, it's a little bit of a slippery slope in terms of fundraising to meet, you know, to replace equipment, things like that. The shot clocks is actually, the irony is, is it's something every district in the state of Connecticut is faced with, because the CIEC, after many years, has finally passed a regulation that they're, they're going to use shot clocks in Connecticut for basketball games. And so this is for shot clocks in both gyms. And it's something every other state already does, and including the prep schools here in the state of Connecticut. So it's a, it's a change in practice. It's not like we have shot clocks already that are used and, you know, outdated, and maybe Booster would do it. It's a new purchase that's a requirement. I, that's not to say, to your point, Mr. Buzuska, like, if there were things here that were worth going to to certain groups, we we could potentially do that.
David?
You know, Joe, you bring up a very good point. In the past years, we've had people like Coke, Coca-Cola. At one time, I think they even paid for the scoreboard out at the football fields.
They did.
Donated it. Unfortunately, with all the changes that have taken place over the years, where soft drinks can't be sold to the school.
I know, right?
Very difficult to go back and say, hey, you know, how about,
That's why.
you know, donate something, but it wouldn't hurt to ask them. I mean, maybe, you know, they can put up a Coke sign someplace for, you know, drink it after school or...
We still sell Dasani.
To come up with something, but, but to your point.
The second, I, I will tell you, the second I sense an opportunity, I I usually pounce on it, you know, we met with a donor around the robotics and the elementary school programs, you know, and I go to the Business Network Group down at Paul Gregory's, I'm attending Rotary, I attend Chamber, like, there's, my ear is always close to the ground for people that want to do stuff for the school system, but I, I'm cautious about going out wide-scale and soliciting donations for the school system, because, again, the sentiment that has been passed on to me is the taxpayers feel that's what their, their money goes to, and we should be funding the needs.
And again, just to speak to that point, I think if we, if we start thinking in that realm of possibility, where, you know, again, there's some, I mean, there's yard metals in town, there's, there's huge partners in our town that, yes, they're, they're huge taxpayers, but, you know, perfect examples of, if there's something that's in their wheelhouse, again, like, I I wish there was something nursing-related on here, where, again, like, I, here I am, I I have a a small business based in town, and, you know, I'd actually be excited to, you know, provide a qu, say, the the CNA program needed ultrasounds to be able to practice doing bladder scans.
You got those five-dollar ice packs?
Yeah, go buy some ice packs.
I'll tell you, well, you know, again, like, I I think, I, I like the idea of donating one-time, like, educational technology. You know, ice packs, I think, you know, we'll figure out a way to, way to do it.
Oh, you're trying to get out of it.
No, not, no, no, I, but, but you, you know what I mean?
I do, I do.
I, I think that... I, I think that there's, there's a lot of possibility and if I'm one person, you know, I'm sure there's, there's plenty of people who would have that same sentiment. I'm a product of this town and I'm a product of the education system. It's afforded me a lot of great opportunity. And, um, again, I'm mature enough now. Hold, hold back. Um, I'm, I'm mature enough now to look back and see what a great opportunity this town has provided for my education. And, you know, I think there's a lot of people that share that sentiment.
Okay.
And I agree, but I think Mr. Madancy, being the advocate that he is for the, for the district and Mr. Deronowski, I'm sure with your connections at the high school. Yeah. You're al- you're always looking for opportunities, so I think if the opportunity comes up, we can count on.
Yep, yep. Anyone else? Mr. Williams, you just?
Nope.
No, you're good. Okay. Did you have any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Anyone else with any questions or comments? Okay. Page fifty-one, this is fiscal year twenty-four. Anything on fifty-two or fifty-three? Fifty-three you already went over, Mrs. Mallett, regarding the twenty-seventh hour, twenty-seventh pay for hourly employees. How often does that happen? Every fourteen years or so?
Yeah, I think thirteen or fourteen years.
Will we all forget it by the next time? Okay, good. Okay. Just checking.
I'll remind everybody.
Okay, good. All right, any other questions on those pages? Okay. The schedule of grant revenues.
So if I could touch upon this one, uh, for a moment. The educational cost sharing, if you look at the top line item, which is by far our largest, largest grant. It's, it's an annual, um, grant. And as you can see, there's a, another slated reduction to it for twenty-two, twenty-three. And this goes along the lines of the conversation I shared with you all the other evening around educational cost sharing, uh, formulas and how Southington is considered overfunded by the state right now. And they use the, our Anglic score, which is the, um.
So what do you to pay?
Adjusted equalized net grand list per capita. So it's basically what is your town's ability to pay? Um, and that, that's part of the formula. And given that formula, it's determined that we're overfunded by the state because of our ability to pay. So if the student-centered funding bill does not get passed, then we stand to see a reduction in that top line item, that grant, every year until the year twenty-twenty-eight. If the student-centered funding bill does get passed, then by twenty-twenty-five, there'll be a new educational cost-sharing revenue formula, which will net the town of Southington seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. So we're either gonna see a reduction every year for the next five years or we're gonna see an increase in twenty-twenty-five. So I've already reached out to Representative Pulis, Senator Sampson, um, CAPS is working on this. This is a bill that has bipartisan support right now up at the leadership ranks, um, within the state. And so hopefully that comes to fruition for us because I think that twenty million four hundred sixty-six thousand, as you all know, is, is a big chunk of what the town manager uses as his base in terms of the revenue side of things for what's gonna be appropriated to the Board of Education relative to the operating budget. So, you know, if any of you have connections to anybody within our delegation that's local, that's a conversation and I can certainly provide you materials if you want. I did share the link with all of you to the bill and, and that net, uh, gain. So you're welcome to just have those conversations that if this is something that's being discussed, you know, it, it does benefit your Southington constituents.
And what does that reduction look like each year? If, if it wasn't funded, do we know?
I don't, other than I could surmise just by looking at this one, um, that it's gonna.
About, about the same as what we expect?
Yeah, incremental to a degree. Um, the biennial budget gets introduced, that's the, the difference, right? Every two years, that number changes in terms of the biennial budget. So that gets introduced February eighth. And so the reduction would occur from the biennial budget allocation.
Yeah. So we'd be look, we could be looking at like another million and a half if it didn't pass over the next two, three years, right?
Yes. Yep.
Any other questions on the grant revenues? Any questions on the art finaster grants? Page fifty-five.
And this is all actually already been expended. It's just, we put it in for historical purposes for whoever had questions about where did the grant funds go, what did you use them for?
I'm sorry, I, I wanted to ask about the Perkins grant. We don't get that anymore, Steve? That was usually to business.
No, we, we do get it. You're probably looking at the one-time grant, which was a CTSO grant that we had in prior years, but we get, um.
It's midway up the page on page, uh, fifty-four.
Okay, I'm sorry, all right.
That's okay. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we got sixty-two thousand.
David, did you have a question?
Yeah, um, when, what, what do we hear about the excess cost grant?
Uh, two months, actually, right?
It's, it's usually, we get the payment towards the end of February. So we have about another six weeks to, to go. And then there's another filing that happens where the special ed department will adjust all the, um, tuition and transportation.
One of the things that, well, there, you know, yes, there's, there's, there's some formulas and some forecasting, so we, you know, we have that idea. But the, one of the things we have done as a district this year, which was the first time, I think I had maybe shared this with you in one of our weekly updates, was we claimed in-district costs for excess cost for all of the special programs that we've started over the years, which is something that had not been done previously. Um, and I believe the number was.
About two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Which is reimbursement against the excess cost of those programs and the services being provided to those students that are in district. In addition, if you recall, that two hundred fifty-four thousand, um, I would consider that revenue that was not found, you know, in years previous. But also, um, if you remember, the cost of those programs was five million against a student-by-student analysis of outplacing those students at thirteen million. Now, I'll call that cost avoidance, not savings, because we never saw an eight million dollar reduction to our budget as a result of those programs. But we saw cost avoidance in terms of had those students been outplaced and we not started that continuum of service model. Um, that would be an entirely different line item for us right now, which would probably be a whole nother set of challenges.
Now, if we go back just a touch with the, um, outplacements, it seems to be climbing?
Uh, it's actually going down. Um, as of this year, we have sixty-five students out and I believe next year we're projected to have.
About forty-nine.
Forty-nine. Some of them age out, it's like a twenty-two years old type of thing. So if they're in an outplacement program or, uh, that type of sort, sort of thing, then, then that would. Um, and others we're able to bring back in to district because of our continuum services. And then others, um, they're settlements where we're no longer responsible. And we've had a couple of instances of students that have moved that were part of our outplace tuition that have left.
Just to add on that, again, going back, I know we had the presentations and everything, but I feel like it's always good to keep repeating the information so that, you know, people who may not have watched the meeting.
Yep.
Know. Wasn't the amount of savings that we've had by doing the programming that we've been doing with special education, wasn't it something to the tune of like three million or four million dollars?
Eight million.
Eight million. So goes back to the point of how we do business at the Board of Ed and what we're doing as far as providing the, um, I guess, that linear look down three, four, five years, the financial planning, I think that we, we all kinda talk about. Um, you know, again, I, I think it's, it's just, it's, uh, seeing a budget like this, it's, it's difficult because I, I know how much we save, I know how careful we are with spending our funds. I know people still think that we, we squander money, but, you know, again, uh, looking at this, it's just, I shake my head. So it's, again, uh, you guys are doing great work for managing, uh, operations and, you know, making presentations like this and, you know, we're not. Just rambling, sorry.
I.
John?
Yeah, well, I'll make a comment to that, all right? So, you know, most of you here on the board have, have, have been here much longer than I have, all right? And, um, you know, uh, uh, again, your comment earlier, Joe, which was, you know, I'm a product of, of, of this district, okay? And I'm very proud of that. But the conversation that, that we're faced with this budget cycle and moving forward, um, we're, we're skirting around the issue, right? And we're, and we're trying to find, we're trying to find savings in places where we're already razor thin. So what it all comes back to is a resetting of the foundational education costs and expenses in this town, okay? And until we have that conversation, okay, and, and face the issue head-on, we're gonna continue to have this sort of dance aro- around, well, as a taxpayer, you know, don't I, you know, don't I, don't I pay taxes to make sure that the schools have supplies? Don't I pay taxes, um, you know, to fund this or have this, okay? We've seen, we're coming out of four years now where we haven't seen an increase in our mil rate. Where our, you know, district, our Board of, um, Education budget hasn't significantly increased. We are now faced with, what's your, the, the, the proposal is seven point six four percent.
Seven three one.
Seven three one, okay? Our, our annuali- our annualized, um, inflation established at the end of twenty-twenty-two is six point five percent. Okay? So if we look at, if we look at the major drivers of our budget for this year, which you just look at inflation-related costs, right? Health insurance, um, contracted services such as, um, you know, baked-in salary increases. Um, increases in transportation, okay? Even if we remove things like reduction in title one funding, um, reallocating, um, some special education teachers back into our operating budget, um, and other minor budget increases here and there, you're still looking at six point two-six million, okay? Which is just over six percent over last year's budget. Okay? That doesn't even keep up with the rate of inflation. So we can sit here and we can, we can look for things and nitpick. But until we face this as a community and as a town of resetting the foundational aspects of educating our youth here in town, we will continue to go in circles. Um, and I guess with that said, I won't, I, I won't continue down that, that path. But I, I think it's important for the town, um, and for the district and for us as a board, um, and our town leaders, um, to really think about this and grasp this. Because this is a function of who we vote for and the leadership and the agenda that we put in place far beyond the local municipal level, far beyond the state level, all right? This is rolled down and we're seeing this, right, in a lot of our funding and our grants. This starts at the federal level and gets rolled down through the state to the, to the towns, okay? Um, with that said, Steve, I'd, um, I don't know if now's the appropriate time or, um, I know I have, I proposed a question in the Q and A. Um, and I'd love for you to tackle that question and, um, and, and have that discussion. So, uh, so the public, um, is informed.
So the question was, what is our current, what are our current staffing ratios, uh, relative to comparable districts? Against the cost of potential unemployment liabilities? Um, if reductions were to be made and how, what that impact could be or what it would look like? If I, I'm paraphrasing to a degree based on that, that conversation, is that accurate?
Yes, that is accurate and, you know.
I don't have the question dock in front of me, but that was.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, right.
So I have a document for you, um.
Yeah.
That I spent a little bit of time on and if you can take one and pass it down, yeah?
And, and Steve, if you wouldn't mind just, um, you know, in, informing our audience of how many, um, staff members the, the district currently employs?
One thousand one hundred and twenty-seven.
Thank you.
So the, the feedback that I received after my budget presentation, um, last Thursday evening was that perhaps some of the districts that were chosen weren't comparable to Southington, um, or were cherry-picked. So if you recall, the districts that I chose initially, uh, were the same districts that were utilized not by Southington, but by Krec as part of an audit that was done. Because they were in our Derg, uh, the demographics were similar, um, and the size of the communities were similar. And so at the time, those communities were Shelton, Wallingford, uh, Milford stacked against Southington. So the slides that were presented were the per pupil expenditure and the percent of per pupil expenditure, um, both last year and over the past five years. And then the other set of communities I looked at were a set of communities that since I've been on, you know, with this board, we've, we've talked about these communities and measure ourselves against them. Uh, they're considered high-performing communities, um, and our, our board always wants to make sure that we're competitive with those communities in terms of what we're providing our students. So those communities were Glastonbury, Simsbury, Avon, Farmington, and then Southington. Both sets of communities, no matter which way you looked at it, uh, we lagged behind both last year and over the last five years. Um, and our per pupil expenditure was lower than all of them. So two different data sets for two different reasons, one in our Derg, one in our county. So I took it a step further and said, okay, if I were to try and find districts that maybe don't have the same demographic per se, um, but they're the same or closest to ours in size and the, the high needs count. Both had to match for me to consider that a match for Southington. So what you have in front of you, and Mr. O'Shaughnessy, I, I apologize. Okay, she said, okay. Um, what you have in front of you are the five districts that are closest in enrollment using the matching criteria, total enrollment and high-need students. So those are East Hartford, Manchester, Stratford, Trumbull and West Haven. So they span across the state. They're not unique to our Derg, they're not unique to our county. When you look at what I've provided you on that sheet is the mil rate of those communities, you will see that Southington is the lowest. What I provided you is the Anglic of those communities, which is the adjusted li- adjusted equalized net grand list per capita, which is the same formula that's applied to every municipality in the state of Connecticut and it's used to determine excess cost or, I'm sorry, uh, educational cost-sharing revenue. So as you can see, Southington ranks ninety-fourth in the state and the only of these five districts that. and the only of these five districts that we trail is Trumbull, which is forty-seventh. All the other districts, East Hartford's Anglic is one sixty, Manchester's is one thirty-seven, Stratford's is one twenty-seven, and West Haven's is one fifty-nine. Now, right below that, you're gonna see another correlation. Because if you don't have the ability to pay, then what might the challenges be in your community? So I took the poverty rate. The poverty rate for East Hartford, as their Anglic is one sixty, their poverty rate is one fifty-five. So that would make sense in terms of the grand list against the poverty rate. Same with Manchester, the Anglic, one thirty-seven, the poverty rate, one forty-five. When you look at Southington's, the Anglic is ninety-four, but the poverty rate is fifty-two. Meaning there are only fifty-one communities in Southington with less poverty than Southington. When you look at Stratford, the Anglic is one twenty-seven, the poverty rate is one twenty-two. When you look at Trumbull even, the Anglic is forty-seven, but the poverty rate is forty. There's even a correlation there. And then lastly, West Haven at one fifty-nine and one forty-nine respectively. So there's a large gap between our ability to pay and our poverty rate. You know, it's something that is factual information. It's certainly the closest I can do to not be accused of cherry picking and trying to provide reliable information that speaks a little bit about where we're at. I want to talk about the per pupil expenditure in these communities. And again, I've heard that that number means nothing, but I'm gonna reiterate what I said at my budget presentation. Whether we agree with what the number is or not, it's the same formula that's applied to every single district to come up with their ranking. East Hartford's per pupil expenditure is one sixty-three. Now with an Anglic of one sixty, understandable. Manchester's per pupil expenditure is ninety-seventh with an Anglic of one thirty-seven. So they're actually outperforming what their Anglic says they're able to pay per pupil. But I'll go back to that slide in a moment. Our per pupil expenditure is one fifty-four against an Anglic of ninety-four. Our Stratford is one twenty-five against one twenty-seven. Again, similar to East Hartford, they're basically paying what they can afford. Same, Trumbull's per pupil expenditure is one forty-five in an Anglic of forty-seven. The interesting thing is if you just drop slightly below that, their local share of taxes is ninety-one percent, Trumbull. They don't receive state aid. Our local share is seventy-three percent. So the Trumbull taxpayers are clearly footing a much larger portion at the local level than state or federal of their per pupil expenditures.
And Mr. Superintendent, can I just interlude for one second?
Yep.
And just to bring home a point here, you know, we spoke about it earlier with the Title I funding. The poverty rank, you know, just so the public knows, that percentage is directly related to what we receive in Title I funding. And because there was a reduction in our poverty rank, which is calculated and issued by the federal government, correct?
Correct.
We received a reduction in over a quarter million dollars in that Title I funding.
Correct.
And we are seeing the same trend with our educational cost sharing coming through, coming through the state level funding. So I just want to make that point as we go through these numbers.
Yep. And then the last number, one fifty-nine Anglic against one fifty-three per pupil expenditure in West Haven. The correlation is there, you know, that's what their ability to pay is, that's, you know, correlates. When you look at the total education budget of all of those communities, you do want to look at the enrollment because there is a tie to per pupil expenditure. West Haven's is lower, but they are at only fifty-seven hundred students versus our sixty-one fifty. And their per pupil expenditure rate ironically is only one higher than ours. They're one fifty-three, we're one fifty-four. The local share, the only town paying a similar local share out of those five communities is Stratford. East Hartford, Manchester, and West Haven are paying considerably less of a local share, which means they're getting far more state aid than Southington or Trumbull. And then lastly, the federal share. And as you can see, we actually are receiving the least amount of federal money of any of these five communities.
And.
So that's one snapshot from a a combination of an economic and education lens for people that is the, I mean, we've now looked at three different data sets, right? We've looked at a data set relative to the special ed audit. We've looked at a data set relative to Hartford County. We've looked at a data set relative to comparable districts with enrollment high needs. Every single data set keeps telling the same story. I don't know what other story I can share to help drive this home. I'd also, if you don't mind, because I wanted to stay just some time, but entertain a few other things. When you look at the size of our district against other districts, I did staffing by function.
I just wanted to talk about that.
And so, but you'll, I will give you a chance to question. Staffing by function, because I think there's a lot of notions that our footprint is too large. How many FTS do you have against your enrollment, right? So you can see these five districts. We are second from the bottom on the administrators and coordinators at district central office level. And if you go down the next box to Mr. Bazuski's point, enrollment, staffing, and expenditure by function, the amount that we're spending on central and other support services, and this is all public information, this is all on EdSite, anybody can grab it, five hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-nine. If you look at any of the other districts, there is nobody, there's one that's one point one million and everyone else is four million, five million, eight million, and twelve million, five hundred and eighty-six thousand. So are we top-heavy in central office? So when we talk about instruction, seventy million. The only district less is Trumbull at sixty-seven. But when you look at support services for students, they're at nineteen million against our eight. When you look at support services for instruction, they're at seven and a half million against our one and a half. Student transportation of all these districts, you can see is actually very comparable and I'm imagining that's because of bidding and contracts. They all, they're all in the same game with the size of their students, the amount of routes, the amount of riders. The total budget at the bottom, East Hartford, and this is just expenditure by function, hundred and twenty-nine million. Manchester, one hundred and thirty-two million. Stratford, one hundred and twenty-five million. Trumbull, one hundred and twenty-five million. West Haven, one hundred and four million. Southington, one hundred and one million.
Almost five hundred students less and they're at a hundred and four million.
Three million higher. So I, you know, Mr. Carson, this is what I had prepared because I think what you're looking at is, are we overstaffed? What are our ratios look like compared to comparable districts? If you look at the staffing levels above it even, the only area where we have a considerably higher amount of staff than these other districts is the paraeducators. Every other area, we're either last or lowest, regardless of the size. I mean, we're larger than three of these, four of these five districts, so.
We need to make this public.
I'm trying.
I'm glad Sean asked it, but we have to get this out to the public. This is very telling.
Well, what I worry about is when you have an edict of shrink your footprint, lay people off. It's a blind edict without knowing what your current levels of staffing are and how that's gonna impact services. Last year, I reduced thirteen paraeducators. I'm still getting phone calls, I can look, they'll nod right now, that they felt that. Because there's now, they're scrambling to get coverage in certain classrooms where kids have needs. And that was thirteen staff members. So an edict of just shrink the footprint without any knowledge of the current levels of staffing and the impact that's going to cause is a tough edict for me. Because it doesn't necessarily speak to the needs or current staffing levels. It ends up being a blanket statement that's driven by financials and maybe not by student needs.
Could I ask them that you send this out?
I will.
Yes, please.
To all members of the Board of Finance as well as.
And I also, within it, I mean, you can't click on, obviously, this link. I hyperlink every source that this was pulled from so that anybody who wants to click on this stuff electronically can look at the same information.
And when we do that, do we have, I know you do, I don't know if you have it with you today. Can we, can we share what the local share of costs are in Glastonbury, Wallingford, and Avon?
I can look that up. I don't have it with me today, but.
Okay. Just because while this is, we greatly appreciate you doing this because again, like, this gives us a third perspective of where we sit here in this district, you know, with, you know, with our neighbors, with our competitors, with our fellow districts throughout the state. And I know in conversations that I've had and, you know, since I graduated high school in the nineties, you know, there's certain lynchpin communities within our state that we're often compared to and compete against. And while the numbers in this set are very comparable, also I think people in the community are concerned about perception.
So I can share with you, I actually just pulled it up, right? So Avon's local share is ninety-one point one percent. Glastonbury's local share is ninety point five percent. And Wallingford's local share is seventy-three point nine percent.
Thank you.
Having lived in Wallingford, I'll tell you, the question I keep asking is how they have a thousand less students and ten million more dollars in their budget than we do? Are they overfunded or are we underfunded? I, you know, and I don't, I've asked superintendents that question, what makes up for the cost? People have speculated two high schools, a pool. If that's ten million dollars a year, then, you know, we're going, we're pursuing a facility study in Wallingford now about one high school. I think that, you know, the taxpayers will figure that one out quickly.
Do you want to pay taxes in Wallingford or Southington? Mr. Superintendent, so, you know, with all this said, what, have you thought about and done an analysis of if we, if the town came back to us in resistance to your proposed increase of seven point three percent? And that meant that hard decisions had to be made as far as programming and, yeah, staffing and, you know, teacher-student ratios and administration within our schools. What's the, what's the analysis or immediate cost of laying a staff member off?
It varies by staff member and it varies by, there's a lot of factors. So there's multiple bargaining units, there's language within their contracts relative to layoffs. For example, an administrator. And if an administrator gets laid off, there's language in their contract that they're automatically bumped into a teaching position in their area of certification, which would put them presumably at max depth and top degree because our administrators all have their sixth year. So the savings you actually get from laying off that administrator is actually only what you would lay off from the least senior teacher that would be bumped as a result of that. So the savings in total for that would be sixty-three thousand dollars. If that teacher happened to be on a family healthcare plan, that would be the high amount. If it's a young teacher and they're not on a family plan or a couples' plan, the savings is only forty-seven thousand dollars. That's the insurance difference, the cost to the district. So if you laid off twenty teachers, you'd have a million dollars, which is less than a percent of our budget. So that would be, yeah.
Mr. Bazuski?
If I could just, again, I think I've had conversations with Mr. Larry who's here tonight, Mr. Chaplinsky who's here tonight, and multiple other members of both boards. And the unfortunate reality in Southington is we run a tight ship on purpose. And I think, you know, looking at our taxes, right, you know, to go to, to Mr. Carson's poke is, again, we run lean, we run effective, and at certain points throughout our history, there's gonna be pills to swallow. And just the same way that we were able to really dive into focusing on the teaching grid and making things more effective for teachers to stay in the community and not leave after four or five years and seek employment elsewhere, I think this is going to be a situation where transparency and honesty is gonna just have to be the focus of what we come to agreement on. And, you know, again, I think, I still believe that, you know, the unfortunate reality with self-insurance, that's a big, that's a big chunk of what we're looking at here. Again, I think we have to look at the non-lapsing account as something to help offset that. But, you know, again, realistically, even if we offset that, say we pull the plug on all projects and now we have a million dollars to put at this. I mean, we're still, what, six and three tenths of a percent or so? You know, again, like, this is a big band-aid that we're looking at right now. I know that we're essentially, we have to work together and we have to be transparent. We can't be kicking around the budget like we've done year after year. When I first came onto this board, I thought that, again, with the mutual support, you know, again, when I came in, it was all Republican.
Leadership.
Leadership. And you would think that with everybody sort of playing on the same team, treating Southington as a crown jewel, treating Southington as sort of just a great place to live, to work, to grow a business, to raise a family, that we could be in agreement on something. And it's just, we haven't been able to quite get there. Honestly, coming out of COVID, coming out of the six and a half percent or seven percent inflation that we're seeing across the country right now, it's hard for everybody, but this is a hard conversation that we have to have.
So I'd like to reiterate what I said during my presentation last week because I know ultimately next Thursday, this is no longer my budget and it'll become your budget. And you'll be working, you know, with the different boards and councils going forward. I have, when I present this data, it's really important and I stress that, this is not meant to pick groups against one another. You know, I don't want this expectations of parents coming to meetings and riling up, you know, and scaring teachers with unemployment threat. That is not at all in anyone's best interests. It's terrible for morale in the community and with the teachers and everyone involved. I'm only sharing this data so everyone, I can try and give everyone the most vivid picture of what we truly have because I do feel in years past, there was a, either we didn't believe, we didn't trust, or we thought you could, you would make it work because you always have. But when there's no new personnel and there's no major projects in equipment and no special projects and your line items are all now at zero for supplies, there's, you know, we've done an enrollment study, we've talked about the fluctuations in enrollment. If, even if I were to show you the five-year history of these five districts, the fluctuations in enrollment can be based on one cohort of kids in any given year. A bubble comes, a bubble goes, you know, of kids. You know, we have grade levels within our elementary school that are coming up and are gonna create another bubble. It's truly meant so that everyone's truly aware of the levity of the situation and the urgency behind the difficult decisions that need to be made. It's not at all attended. I think our last year was, you know, given what we were all against even last year with the economy, was the best we could do with our budget and I think we got a fair level of support from the town. It's just the reality is still here, you know, it hasn't gone away. And as you saw, the drivers are just as much to do with escalation and inflation as they are with other circumstances of maybe in years past, we've reallocated funds and found out the creative way to do things and all of the rabbits have been pulled from the hat. There's nothing left. So that's the only reason why I share the data I do because you can see that I'm passionate about trying to convey the message that this is a real and urgent situation. It is truly not. So when you say we work together, I have every intention of working with our Board of Finance and our Town Council. They were great to work with last year and I look forward to working with them again this year. And I also know, which is why I said it weighs very heavily on me when I opened the budget, I know the challenge that they're up against as the fiscal authorities of the town. I know the challenge that they're up against as the fiscal authorities of the town, that the community is paying increased cost for everything that they're doing in their homes as well. And so passing on a tax increase at the same time people are being hit in their pockets for other costs is a very delicate balance. And I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, and, you know, and to that point, I will, I will say that, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, but I, I have little reservation about saying that there is no one on this board that wants to go to our town council with a 7.3% budget increase. That does not sit well with any of us. And I know personally, I lose sleep over that, okay? And, and so when we do these workshops and, and we do these exercises and I ask you for numbers and figures, it's with these things in mind, okay? Because, you know, we, we are conscious of, of the taxpayers, we are taxpayers ourselves. And because of things out of our control with, with the economy, inflation, and because we haven't truly done a hard reset in this town, that, that should have been ta- ha- that should have taken place over the past four or five years to, to reset our foundational, um, educational costs within this town and what the taxpayer shares in those costs. We are now faced reality with 7.3%, okay? And, and we have to deal with it now. And, um, yeah, it's, it, it's extremely difficult and, um, you know, even at the finance committee level, you know, just out of our last meeting, we've, we've put a hard stop on, on spending non-lapsing funds, okay? Because of what we're faced with. But with that said, um, you know, we're, we're here to have the conversation. And we're here to engage not only with the public, but with town council to try and come up with a reset and a resolution, not only for this coming fiscal year, but for years to come. And my only hope is that, uh, you know, that, that cost sharing, uh, comes through for us because that's a big, a big piece of this, um, but.
Mrs. Carmody? Yes, I, I would just like to say that it is the responsibility of our superintendent and all superintendents to present a budget that represents the needs of the students of our school system. And that is what you have done. And I hope the public really examines this and to your point, Sean and Joe, it's difficult, it's very difficult. But that is your job, Steve, to present a budget that represents the needs. These aren't wants, these are needs of our district. And that is what you were charged with and that is what you did. Bottom line.
Again, not, not to belabor the point, but thi- this year, so say, everything goes the way that we could possibly go and, you know, just looking at the numbers here. We have opportunities in the next two, three, four years of elementary schools essentially streamlining processes. You know, again, maybe there's one school over another school that's costing us a lot more to run just on the physical burden side and being able to build two new elementary schools. This isn't sort of a, a one-year fix. It's essentially getting into the habit of just the same way that we've done this with, and again, like, it, it was with Republican support over the past, over a decade as I was actually finishing school, is paying attention to the needs of the schools, the needs of the town, and slowly but surely checking off projects on the list. And, you know, the unfortunate reality is, I wish this could come at a good time, but like everything, everything always hits at once. And this is an opportunity to create a better reset for our district, but then also in the upcoming years of potentially getting that number down and providing even more of a reset into what, what the figures and what the, what the numbers are going to look like in the future.
I think what it boils down to is we have to have conversations. How does this town value education?
Right.
Does this town value education? And if so, how do we get the funding that is necessary for the schools? And yes, this came at a bad time. But the reality is we have, you know, the taxpayers understand inflation. They understand that you go into a grocery store and yes, things are, cost more. Guess what? We're running a business and inflation has affected us. So it comes down to, to a fundamental, do you value education in, in Southington? Do you want to move the system ahead? Or are you trying to dismantle it? Which is it going to be? Because that's what, that's basically what we're facing. And that's a decision that we all have to, we all have to make.
I, I, I will add though, I do think that there's still a balance, right? Like, I agree, we, we absolutely, we, we want to make sure that we do what's necessary to, to fund education and, and give it, you know, everything that it needs. We still have an obligation and we still have to remember that when we raise the cost, it all, it increases what the tac- the, the, the burden on the taxpayer. And that's the balance. And everyone has to, has to keep that in mind. The challenges that we see right now, they're not, they're not the town council's fault, they're not Southington's fault, right? We're, we're, we've got a major economic challenge, um, across the country, and we're not immune to it. But just like we're not immune to it, neither are the taxpayers, and we still have to keep them in mind. So I, I still challenge us, we have to continue to, 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 to kind of look at this and, um, and obviously we'll be working with, with the other councils and boards, but there's a, this, this isn't easy.
No. It is not. Anything else? Anyone else? Okay. I'd say meeting adjourned, but it's, it's, it's not a meeting, so thank you all.